Good evening and welcome to the Parks and Rec Commission Special Meeting. I'd like to officially call this meeting to order at five o'clock. With myself being present, I will take roll call. Ben Kramer. Robin Osmond Stott is absent. Becky Kek. And John Jones. Great. First item is a general public comment. This is the time members of the public may give comment of a general nature. No official action may be taken by the commission during this time unless it is to direct staff to look into a matter. Public comments are limited to five minutes. If you are watching online and would like to make a public comment, please send a chat message to the host in Zoom.
There are no members of the public online.
Great. First item is reports. From Joanie Westcott.
Is what?
What's that?
Updates.
Updates, yes.
Okay. So I provided you with the updates on these topics. Truck K. Covey Euro Park, Wi-Fi, town park restrooms. Tuzigutrap parking resurfacing project. Lower Tepco Rep viewing Scope and Concerts in the Park. With a brief explanation or brief update. Is there any particular? We can have a very brief conversation about something that's on there if you need to. So if you need some with have a question or clarification on any of those items, you can let me know now. Becky, you didn't have any questions? Oh, you got that answered. Okay.
Okay. Everyone good on that? Okay. Next is the minutes. Everybody got a chance to look them over. Are there any, any discussion on the minutes? From, I guess, May 8th? Yes. Is there a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes from May 8th, 2024, as written.
Great. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, what's been moved by Commissioner Kramer and seconded by Commissioner Kek? Now, do you want to do a roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
And aye. And so it's been passed unanimously. Next item is new business. Clarkdale's Old Fashioned Fourth of July. This is the reason we're here tonight. Have this conversation. For those of you who've been with us for a while, you understand what this event is about. And for those of you who haven't, hopefully you got a chance to read over the staff report and got a pretty good idea of this event. It's been going on for many, many, many years. It's one of our pride events of Clarkdale. And we truly love bringing our volunteers together to help us put this event on, on the Fourth of July. It will always be on the Fourth of July, just like Halloween is always on Halloween. And so we wanted to, we always give our commission the opportunity to review the things that we did or have done in the past and let us know if you would like to make any changes. We are proposing that we stay with our plan as we have done it, as we did it last year. But before I go there, let me, I do need to give you an update on the gazebo construction because that was one thing that, that affects our event. We would normally have a band on the, that would perform from the gazebo. And once again, we will not be able to do that, however. And if there were going to be construction beginning, we would need to change our whole layout of the park in the event. And the word is, we have it at this moment, is that construction will either begin and be done by July 4th, or it will not begin until after July 4th. So that was good news to me. So we don't need to make any changes to the, to the layout or to the program. So we are recommending that we consider, that we do the Pancake Breakfast, which is done by the Clarkdale Police Department. And the Verde Valley Fire District is a fundraiser. The fire truck rides start from 7:30 to 11:00. The carnival games, we work in partnership with the Clarkdale Jerome School and our sponsor to provide those games for free. And that was, we started that a few years ago. And it's been very successful. It works as a great fundraiser for the school and gives the, all the kids the opportunity to join in the fun. The Ice Cream Social is hosted by the Clarkdale Historical Society and Museum. And then, of course, the thing that started this whole Fourth of July event to begin with was, is the children's parade. I will tell you, my mother-in-law has told me the story of being kind of the founder of this event. When, when my husband was young, the moms in town all got together and they said, hey, let's, you know, do a parade for, let the kids do a parade and then have an ice cream social at the park. And that's kind of how it all got started. And it's very cool that we get it, that it's grown and that we get it still offer this event. So the kids' parade starts at nine from the Clarkdale Jerome School and comes down to the park. And we will be doing our parade announcements as soon as the parade is over. We have 9:40 on here. Last year, we were a little premature in starting our announcements and not, not everybody was back around the block to the park by the time we started giving awards. So we want to make sure that we are completely clear and we have everyone in the park that might receive an award. And we did change that up a little bit last year where there are five, five awards in each category, in each of three categories. And and we don't put a first, second, or third place on it, just all the kids, five kids from, from that. And keep in mind that that parade is kids only. We don't do political, you know, floats or motorized vehicles or hoofed animals, in case anybody asks. No horses. And then we all have the Cottonwood Community Band begin at 10:00 AM until 11:00. So that is a bit of a change. They used to start at 9:30. They do not like to have their program interrupted. And for us to be able to get the prizes out to the kids during the time that, right after the parade in the park, we did a bit of a time adjustment. And so we're going to try this this year. So that was the one timing change that we made. We do own a bubble machine. We did have a discussion among staff if we should do the bubble machine. We purchased it a few years ago. It is very, very tough on our grass. And Public Works really doesn't, they're trying very hard to keep our grass under control and it does use a bit of water. So we decided, based on some of the issues that we've had and because of those reasons, to not do the bubble machine. And we may just retire that machine and figure out another good use for it. Oh, I already covered the prizes. We did take off under our prizes. We're looking for innovation, basically creativity. The small-town charm, preserving our history. And we did change in our literature, the sustainable, the sustainability, just for, so that there's not any question as to what that, what that might be. These do fit within the guidelines of our strategic plan or strategic values. So we do want to, you know, consider them, but we kept, we simplified it for the kids, so they understand what they're doing. And I already mentioned the prizes. We do five in each red, white, and blue category. And then we have our wonderful judges that help choose. And I believe Chairperson Castle can give an update on the volunteers that are, she's already done the outreach for volunteers for the, for the event. Yes, we're looking pretty good. We've got our judges, everybody wanted to do the pancake. So that's covered. The parade is covered, judges are covered. You talked with Toby, I assume, you said you. Anyway. And we still need a few people, but we're getting there for the setup and breakdown. But we're looking pretty good there, too.
Sure. Good.
Oh, we do want to include, make sure, I did talk with Jen Julian about making sure the Flight Corps members get a ticket. I'm just going to put them on the list at the bottom. She's going to give me a list of who's doing it that day.
Okay.
And then make sure they get it.
Okay. And we do need volunteers. So all volunteers who help with the event to get a free pancake breakfast. And we had a conversation, we had our meeting with our special events team this week. And we have had a bit of our volunteers, we tell them to go to the front of the line because they're working and they need to get their food. And nobody wants to do that. Nobody wants to go stand in line in front of someone else. So we are going to try this year to have a separate, Jen Julian from the Police Department is going to set up an entirely separate area that we'll be able to point out or have marked for volunteers to go and get their food and not have to look like you're cutting in line in front of anyone. So we don't have anybody getting upset.
And I did add another person to that, to, because do you need someone to man that table, correct? So I did add another person to the pancake.
Right. Thank you. Is there any discussion that you would like to have about Fourth of July? Any questions?
My question, was there an age limit for the kids to participate in the parade?
Yes, it goes to 18. So there's no young limit. They can be as. And they're usually, I mean, parents can obviously accompany their children in the parade. But yeah, and sometimes adults just like to walk in the parade and they can. We just don't do cars or floats or anything like that. We had someone want to do a golf cart one year. No, no motors.
Any other discussion?
Well, every year they include all the electric cars that drive through there. So those will still be in, right?
The electric car.
All the little Tyco trucks that drive through the parade every year.
Don't need the rules, you're, they do say no gas-powered motors. How you explained it to me.
Yeah, so they're, so, yes, I know you're talking about the little, the little battery-powered, the small ones, yeah, those, those are okay. Thanks. Sorry, I wasn't clear on that.
Like a Tesla you could drive.
No Teslas.
It fits the description of what's allowed.
Of course, you would have to bring up the one thing that we can't. Okay, well, if there's, if there's no other questions or concerns or ideas, something you would like to see done different, then we recommend the approval of the Clarkdale Old Fashioned Fourth of July Event Plan, as we have listed all the components at this time.
I, I think that helping out for several years, the stumbling block ends up being right there when we're handing out awards because kids are gone, or they don't know what the group name was that mom wrote down. And there are a lot of non-specific names like Clarkdale Kids and Fourth of July Fund People. And so I think it would be helpful to have something that is a differentiator that says like, you know, Susanna Thompson and your group, the whatever, right? So like a parent name or something, because I know a lot of times you're standing there and the kids don't know what their group name is. There's 15 of them, you know?
Right.
So maybe something, maybe there's some way to differentiate because I, it seems like a lot of times we're like standing around with two or three awards. Like, oh, they never came back or they never showed up, you know? Yeah. So maybe that would be something that we could think about.
So I think on the, on the sheet that gets filled out by the judges, let's see, what happens with that? That comes to the park along with the applications. And so perhaps we should talk about either having a volunteer at the parade that would quickly take that list and go through the applications and pull out a parent name and include it with what, what's going to get read.
Judges usually just list the numbers.
They don't even have numbers anymore. We're not giving.
We don't do numbers anymore.
Yeah, so how would you call out the winners? You would say whoever has a ribbon, come up here and get an envelope?
Did you guys give the ribbons out?
Do the ribbons.
Before the, you gave, didn't the ribbons go with the prize? Did you guys, I think originally we were going.
Last, that's what we were, last year, we were going.
Ribbons and cash prizes.
You were gonna, you were gonna give those to the kids at the parade and that didn't happen. They came to the park and that's what we handed out. So I think that was for a couple of reasons. That was primarily because it was really hectic and tried to get everybody awarded their ribbons before the parade is ready to start. First off, and secondly, I think that there was a discussion about, you know, kids being in the parade and already being awarded and not, not, maybe some other kids feeling bad about that and seeing them. So, so we, we waited until, I know that was the plan because that's what we had discussed, but then it got rerouted into.
Yeah.
So last year.
They don't have numbers, how will we?
So last, so last year, we didn't have numbers. And what our judges did was they asked the winners what the name of their group was. So this year, the judges could say, what's the name of your group to the people when they talk with them? And what's the adult's name in the party? And they, then they could do exactly what you're describing of write down the Clarkdale Hot Rockets with Susanna Thompson or whomever for that parent name.
What, what did you guys write down last year?
The numbers.
We didn't have numbers last year.
We didn't collect them at the end.
No. So you guys must have just written down.
Getting your ears, your ears mixed up.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess we wrote down the names that they gave us.
Yeah.
And that's why the kids didn't know what to come up because they didn't know who.
Exactly.
What their group name was.
Did you do, is everybody registered by the time you guys start judging? Like, is everyone filled out a form by the time you're?
The ones that fill out forms have already done it. Yeah, by the time they get in line, but.
Yeah, I'm just.
Only if they decide to go over and fill out a form.
I'm just wondering if you could gather the forms if they're ready. And then as they say, whatever, you could write first, or blue, or whatever, on the actual registration forms. Then you would have all the information. But then there's people still registering then? I don't, I don't know.
I feel like going back to the numbers might, might be more appropriate with a number than it's easy because they've got, but they should still have their numbers attached to them when they come to the park. And not everybody, we lose numbers that way. And I think we actually threw our numbers away because we weren't going to do that.
It really simplified the process last year to not have the numbers because we didn't have to clip them on each of the kids. And at the end, we didn't have to collect them all. And then we also didn't have to match up the numbers with the application. So it saved us a lot of time to have the judges just talk to the people. They often are making conversation, oh, you know, how long did you work on your bike and saying hello? And so then it just helped us for them to find out what's your group name and what's, and then they could ask adult name. Do you think?
I do have to say that Commissioner Kramer has volunteered as a parade judge for like 20 years now. Forty, something like that. So your input is really.
Of what, like?
Yeah.
Well, we'll just give it a try. We'll just say, what's your na, what's your parent's name?
Well, and maybe what we can do at registration, the coordinator, we could make sure she knows that what, they know what name they put on there. So maybe reiterate, reiterate it when they're registering. Just say, you know, remember the name of your group because that's what.
Just the adult name. Why do we need any group name at all? It, it benefits us not.
Only because it's fun and the kids like to come up with a group name sometimes.
Yeah, we, we just end up having like four or five kids that are like Star Spangled Glory. So it doesn't help us differentiate between anybody. I don't, I don't know what would be the easiest.
Well, when you write it down, get a name.
Yeah.
Just get a name of somebody in the group. Because there might not even be an adult there, right?
Right, a lot of times they're not, they drop.
A name, a representative.
Who should be called up, yeah, okay.
Yeah, as you're doing that, just, you know.
I mean, alternately, we could just hand out the envelopes and the ribbons at the thing and not even do an announcement. You know?
Yeah. But kids are walking down the street with an envelope with money in it.
Well, you hand it to the adult.
But what if they're not there?
I don't know.
It's kind of fun. I keep them down at the park, enjoy hearing the results.
They want to see who won. All right, well, we'll give it a better shot.
Can do it. We believe in you.
Could you put a name tag on one kid in the group? Just you're the whatever, red, white, and blue glory or something. And he's your guy with the name tag. And when you call it, everybody in the group goes, you're it. This is our group. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, if we handed out the ribbons, we'd say, everybody with a blue ribbon, come on up, you know? Yay, yay. Congratulations, everybody with a white ribbon going up, yeah, you know?
Well, so, I mean, that's obviously something that we could do is go ahead and give the ribbons and not the money until they come to the park.
But do, will everybody in the group get a ribbon or just one ribbon?
Yeah.
Kids, okay, another opportunity for the kids to.
Those are, yeah, yes, exactly. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, all right.
So we. I think give the ribbons and the money at the.
At the end.
Park.
Okay.
I mean, that's my opinion, but. And just get a name, you can get their group name and a name of representative, like, say, you know?
All right.
Listen, or your name.
Sure.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Then what we used to do when we had the parade numbers is we would get the numbers and the group name because the judges would ask that question. But then when the list got to the park along with the stack of registration forms, then we would go through the registration forms and pull out the registration forms of the family of the, of the winners. So that's an option, as long as whatever name they're telling you as you're judging them is the same name that's on the, is on the paper with the numbers, we could correspond the number.
So here, so in an effort to innovate, what if they filled out their waiver and held it with them before the parade? And the judges went around and said, can I have your paper? Can I have your paper? Can't have your paper? And then we write blue, white, red, nothing.
Loser.
Loser. And, and then, and then you just come down and you have a stack and you say, here they are.
Yeah, because we will have a couple of volunteers at the end and they could collect those, right? Would, and then.
That's right.
Give them, collect the papers, get their necklaces and then.
We could have three different colored markers that we just, here, let me see your form. And then as they're leaving, we can collect all the forms, say, and then we'd have them all.
So don't the judges have a converse, you each judge individually and then come together to choose the alternate winners?
Kind of like, have you seen a third dog yet? No, okay. Well, this, they have a chicken, I guess, we'll just do that one. You know, I mean, I, it's.
But now there are different categories now. It's just.
Yeah.
Blue, red.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. If they all had the papers, then you could just collect the ones that were going to get prizes. But I don't know what you do with the papers after either.
Yeah, we'd need everybody's forms because they're a liability. There's a sign-off from parents. So we, we have to, we have to make sure that we get one of those from each group. I'm just trying to think that through.
Yeah.
Do you normally take the registration forms down to the park with the list of the winners?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, well, you do, you walk around and you come back and you go, well, what do you think about the, the Army Man and the Statue of Liberty? And the, you know, whatever the other thing is, Washington Crossing the Delaware. Jury. And then you say, uh, yeah, well, those are all blue ribbons, right? Yep, I think so, too. Oh, I also saw this and that's weird. Okay, well, now how we have four, what's our fifth one? That one. Number seven. And then you write all those down and then we do the next one. So, I don't know, we'll just give it a try. We'll just ask them their names and their names and their parents' name and the good, the phone number and the email in case.
Yeah, I'm just still trying to think of.
I'm sure anyway we do it, we'll be fine.
Would it, once, once the decision has been made, can those winners, instead of getting their ribbon, could they just get a blue piece of paper? Come to the, come to the, come to the, no?
When you get down there at the award ceremony, you'll be called up. Yeah.
I think it's more exciting for them to be at the park and then find out.
And not know until the very end.
Because it's exciting.
Okay.
But.
We'll just ask, what's, okay, what's your, what's, what's a name for you guys? You know? The Johnson family, okay.
If you get a, okay. If you get a last name, it should be, right?
Yeah.
We trust you.
I mean, last year, we had only one group, one ribbon left that didn't get.
They probably just took off before they.
They just took off, yeah. So because, I think because we did it so soon after the end of the parade, usually we were waiting until after the band played at 10:30.
They're thinking, we're not waiting for another hour.
We're not, yeah, they're out of there. And so doing it sooner, I think it helped us get, you know, more people awarded.
Well, maybe at the registration table, we can tell people, hey, hang around after the thing for immediate award ceremony.
Exactly. At the registration, they can say, awards will be given at 9:40, so don't leave.
Yeah. Or 45 or.
Or 9:40, 9:45, yeah.
Okay.
Did we put 9:45 or we didn't say what time on the night?
Or whenever, yeah, whenever.
It says, it says 9:40 or immediately after parade.
If it only take, if we only have 10 people and it only takes them 10 minutes to get down the street.
Yeah.
Then we'll do the awards sooner.
But then. How to give them 15 awards?
Well, it's easy, we get all the, yeah, yeah, we got to get them all up there. Yeah.
All right.
Any other discussion on how we are awarding or anything else? Nope. Anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Clarkville Old Fashioned Fourth of July Event Plan with all the listed components and awards.
Right, it's been moved by Commissioner Kramer and seconded by Commissioner Kek. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hey, the motion passes unanimously. And we're on to future agenda items. Anybody have any ideas? I know we did talk last time, this isn't a future agenda. Well, it kind of is, you're going to put reports, Commissioner Reports as a standing agenda.
Yes, and I'm just kind of trying to figure out how exactly we're going to structure that. And so we'll, we'll get that on to the next. We kind of threw this one together last minute, as you know, so we could get Fourth of July underway. And just a reminder that we will be counseling, canceling June meeting, possibly July meeting, depending, regular meeting, but we may need to have a special meeting. We'll, we'll keep you posted if we get some stuff from the Asylomongee Park that we need some further follow-up with.
With no further items, here's your, any objection to adjournment?
None.
All right. The meeting is adjourned. The meeting is adjourned at five thirty.